All right, the time is now 7:05 PM and I will call this meeting to order and maybe have a roll call, please.
Mayor Riechel.
Here.
Mayor Protem Notte.
Here.
Trustee Brettenall.
Here.
Trustee Klaassen.
Here.
Trustee Flores.
Here.
Trustee Hanran.
Here.
Trustee Seifert.
Here.
All right, maybe we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance at any moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program or do we have anyone sign in?
Nobody for anything that's not on the agenda, it appears.
Okay.
Nobody here for rezoning issue.
Okay. Do we have any emails or phone calls either Sheila?
No, we did not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the November 28th, 2022 Board of Trustees Meeting and Resolution Number 23, Series 2022, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Silt to set various town fees and deposits from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. Anyone like to discuss any of those or make a motion?
No discussion. Tap fees, right, 10,005, right? All good, I suppose. Yeah. All right, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Mayor Protem Notte to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Trustee Klaassen. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
All right.
Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
None here.
No, sir.
I've got none. Do we have any agenda changes by the board or by staff?
None here.
None here. Staff doesn't have any.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to Resolution Number 26, Series of 2022, a resolution approving the special use permit to allow for the location of the Sunlight Four Square Church at 701 Main Street within the Town of Silt, Colorado. And I will turn this over to Planner Chain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Aaron, come on up. Or Francie wish you or with you or Amy with you? They're all online.
Yeah, I think Amy's online.
Is the weather that bad out right now? Didn't look like it.
No, it's not snowing now. Okay. It's not bad.
All right, and I also want you to know that Attorney Sawyer is present virtually. So this is a special use permit for the Sunlight, the Sunlight Four Square Church, and there is also a resolution associated with it. That's Resolution 26, Series of 2022. And the property owner is Western Colorado Exchange LLC, and that's who I was asking about Francie. She was here because she appeared at the Planning Commission meeting. And the site location is 701 Main Street. I know it as the Skipps Market Building. You may know it as something else. The land area is 18,000 square feet and plus. There is an existing building on it. It's in the B1 Business Zone District. And right now, the property is partly vacant, and there is also the Legacy Funeral Home in it, which takes up about a quarter of that building. There's no change in zoning being proposed. There has been public notice provided. Adjacent zoning to the south, that's towards Front Street and I-70, that's the B3 Business Zone District. Everything else, north, south, northeast and west, that's all B1. And adjacent land uses are auto repair and related uses and a number of things to the south. To the north, retail food and beverage and shops. To the east, you have multifamily residential and a food truck. And to the west, you had a fire station. Okay, this is an application for location of Sunlight Four Square Church. It's a, it's a place of worship. They were located in Glenwood for a number of years. They since closed up that, sold that property. And if I'm wrong, Aaron, you can, you know, fill in later.
Sure.
And they're trying to move to Silt, and this is, they have a contract for sale for this, and this is a special use permit. And a special use permit means that something can occur in this zone district. Depends on are there any adverse effects, anything else, such whatnot. It's reviewed by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has reviewed it, and they recommend that you approve the special use permit, and you're the final decision-making body. And in terms of some background, this was Skipps Market. The building was built in 1989, and I'm not sure what was there before Skipps Market. But since Skipps left, you've had the Legacy Funeral Home, made a special use permit. Divine Moon moved in, and that was a use by right, basically a gift shop. They're now out of there. You had another special use permit in about four or five months ago, and that was all in, that was a year ago, excuse me, all-in brewing, and for some reason that, that couldn't be completed, so they're gone. So there's an application for Sunlight to take possession of the, of the property. And the property itself, there's two parcels. There's where the building is, and at the southwest quadrant of that half block right next to the alley, there's a vacant lot. And if this is approved, they will use and they'll get the purchase, both the, the building itself, Sheila has it up there now, and that vacant portion. Where the first parcel with the building is 13,125 square feet. There's a 3,000 square foot building on it. Assessors' record says not quite 1,800 is heated. I'm not sure if that's totally accurate. Sometimes they are not totally accurate. But anyway, that's sort of the background, and this is for a special use permit for a, a place of worship. It has all-town utilities, obviously, water, wastewater, electric. There is parking on-site right now, and there's also parking adjacent to the property, both on Seventh Street and along Main Street, and actually down to Front Street if you would like to park there. What's a little bit different about this is the federal government is involved. Usually zoning and land use, that's local. Sometimes there's areas of state interest, sometimes there's areas of county interest. Not in this particular case. This is under the jurisdiction of the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. And basically, under that act, municipality must treat a place of worship the same as a similar secular use that is permitted in a zone district. In the case of Silt, you know, the town must treat a church the same as a fraternal organization, a civic hall, a nonprofit lodge. Think, think Eagles Club, Odd Fellows, you know, probably the Legion, you know, same, you know, same thing. Okay, in terms of the comprehensive plan, and I'm going to look at this, you know, from the big picture, like from 15,000 feet, the comprehensive plan designate this as downtown. Okay, this is the downtown, supposed to be the town's retail, commercial core area with attractive street fronts. And the downtown's designated from First Street on the west. Hopefully, they say it's the 16th Street on the east, which is a pretty long stretch. I think of the heart of it right now being from Ninth Street and going to the west. The description of this land use designation, that's on page 21 of the comprehensive plan, I put that in your packet, and it talks about downtown properties being very visually attractive with architectural features, features normally encountered in historic downtown areas, and the town's western heritage is encouraged throughout the downtown area. Something for you to know with the town code, right now fraternal organizations, civic halls, nonprofit lodges, they are used as by right in the B1 Zone District. Place of worship, it's a use by right in the agricultural zone district and the business industrial district, and then it's a special use permit in all others, including residential. In terms of the review criteria, there are a number of them, I'll go through them. Compliance of the application with this code. The application is in general conformance with Chapter 17.78, special use permits, as well as various aspects of other portions of Title 17 zoning. And we should note that the impacts of a church are essentially the same as from a fraternal organization, civic hall, et cetera. The next criterion, compatibility of the proposal with the character of the surrounding area. This proposal is in general compatibility with the surrounding area. It can fit in well, and the building has some western heritage feel. If it's proven successful, they can bring people in on Sunday, which is always good to have in downtown. Desirability and need for the proposed use, and my comment is this use is appropriate and desirable for the downtown, similar to a fraternal organization, civic hall, or a nonprofit lodge. The next criterion, encouragement, the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. And I believe the church is an appropriate use. The board and planning commission have already decided that the impacts associated with a church are acceptable in B1 by making similar fraternal organizations a use by right. The next criterion, potential for adverse environmental influences that might result from the proposed use. There appears to be no indication that adverse environmental influences could appear from this use. And compatibility of proposed use with the comprehensive plan. The characteristics, this portion of the comprehensive plan, downtown emphasizes that the town's retail, commercial core is the aspect of this area that should be considered. However, B1 zoning makes non-retail uses such as fraternal organizations and civics hall a use by right. The impacts of a church, they're indistinguishable from those of what are allowed. And the last criterion is an adequate provision for ingress and egress, vehicle or another traffic, parking, servicing, unloading, uploading, refuse, service areas, utilities, screening. This is where you get into the nitty-gritty of parking and like for the marble shops of, you know, two months ago, are they being screened properly? Is there adequate loading and unloading? So that's what you're dealing with with this criteria, which is almost a catch-all. The parking is fine. The parking code does allow anything in the, along Main Street to also include the developed area for parking adjacent to you for your, for parking for that particular use. And there's also enough parking on-site right now. That may change over time, but at least for the first few years, it would not. Utilities are obvious, obviously there. And the applicant's application itself, year one, there's really not much change. Year two, they'll do some, some more improvements, start trying to bringing in some uses, and make that sort of common area for some of the public and community groups to use. They're also talking about having Wild Coffee, which used to be Missy's, also share the space and be a type of a co-tenant. And then in the long term, it's more getting into some classrooms, make the place more children-friendly, maybe start using the, that'd be the eastern portion of the building. And then it has some parts for the code that are just there for your easy reference. In terms of the general reaction, the church and land use, they can fit in and would actually be a good addition to town. Church use, as noted already, is indistinguishable from the fraternal organization, civic hall or nonprofit lodges, which are also a use by right in the B1 Zone District. And I finalize that with want to make sure both the commission and the board know that if you approve this application, it's not going to hurt the downtown. Sometimes people think if it's not a retail use, that's not necessarily good for the town. You have these similar uses that are already used by right. My findings and conclusions, the application meets the various elements of the town zoning code. The application meets the guidance given to the downtown land use designation contained in the comp plan, which this particular property is located, and the application generally meets all other review criteria for a special use. Staff recommends, oh, I thought before the planning commission did recommend that you approve the, the special use permit. And if you choose to recommend approval, the following conditions are, one, that all statements made by the applicant, both in the application and in any meetings before the planning commission, be considered conditions of approval unless modified in any subsequent conditions, and that the applicant obtained a building permit for all improvements within the structure as necessary over time. I did put those conditions in a draft resolution of approval, and right now I am open for any questions. And Michael, do you need to say anything to the board before we open it up?
I don't think so unless the board has a specific legal question.
No, I don't think I have a specific legal question. The first question that I had for Attorney Sawyer or Planner Chain, I guess it's my understanding now that they're trying to buy the building, which maybe I missed that here, but regardless of that fact, even if they were to just lease this particular section of that building, being a church, how does that impact property taxes on that portion of the building, if at all? I know it may, if they buy the building and then it's changed zoning as a church, they can be exempt from property taxes, but I don't know if that's the same as if it's just a lease. Can you talk to us about that?
Well, if you're using it and you're, you're a leasehold and it's a legal nonprofit, you know, the property taxes are reduced. It's not like you're a retail operation or a restaurant or anything. I can't tell you it's going to be nothing like it was the school district, but it's definitely reduced comparative if it was a traditional tax-producing downtown property.
Okay.
If, if the applicant is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, they're not going to pay property tax.
Now, is that the same if they simply just leased that portion of the building versus own it?
I mean, there would be the extra step of the landlord going and getting the county to recognize that, but yes.
Yeah, and I've done that before, just so you know. I have a side business where I protest people's property valuations every other day, and sometimes when there is a nonprofit use, it's corrected downwards.
Okay, got it. All right, thanks for that clarification. I mean, I'll share my thoughts first if you guys like. So I read the attorney's letters here, and I, I read your guys' letter, you know, regarding your special use permit request, which I think was well-written out and very clear. My initial thought when I read that is that, to me, it just doesn't seem like the right space downtown for a church. You know, I mean, this is like in the absolute heart of downtown Silt. You know, we've been doing a lot of work trying to, you know, develop economically downtown, create kind of a, a certain feel downtown, so, you know, my opinion was that this isn't the right match for that space, but what do you guys think?
Yeah, well, you, you kind of got to be careful in telling the church where they can and can't go, because you don't want to give the impression of some sort of discrimination.
I'm not.
You know, and I'm not saying you are.
I'm just saying, you know, I mean, because I read Planner Chain's, you know, first Planner's
report on that, and I, I didn't agree with it, so thank you for your due diligence in, in, you know, adding, you know, the, the section on, on, you know, the government involvement in that.
Is it my turn?
It's anybody's turn. Tell us what you're thinking.
I, I had the same thoughts initially, but then I, yes. Fundamentally, I agree with you. I guess what I don't know is anything about the frequency of use. There's some stuff about more social things, more educational things, that increases the use of that space for the specific purpose of faith, which detracts from some other potential economic benefits for the downtown corridor. Can you speak in any more specificity about what sort of the longer-term plan is for growth and, and how it relates to frequency of use of the space?
Sure. Again, it's kind of in idea phase, but we definitely, I think, I think one of the, the things that comes up too is you can think of a church as a building that's open, you know, once a week. We really have in mind to be open to the community. We want to invest in the building. We want to create space for other entities that aren't a part of our faith group or, but, but make that a, an opportunity for the town to use. So that, that's kind of not super-specific, but I, that is very intended, that we would create space that other groups could use. Some examples would be AA groups. We have been reaching out to the senior housing group here, thinking about having them down for different events, lunches. We actually bring them gifts at the holiday time, so we would maybe do something in the building there. We've thought about senior lunches at the building, high school lunches.
First responders.
First responders. Thought about, I mean, we really just want to create space that the community can use. So.
Mr. Mayor, just as a, as a point of order, what was probably best now is, I mean, I, I asked you if you had questions of my staff report, and instead of asking specific questions, it's probably best to let the app get, make their presentations. They made one at the planning commission, they answered some of your questions, and then we can get into general questions and have the public hearing, because otherwise you're asking, you're getting into the opinion before they've had their pitch. So sorry about that.
So you want me to just kind of speak from?
Yes, yeah.
So, yeah, so, so we've been a church in, in Glenwood Springs for over 30 years. The demographics changed, and most of our people live down here. We wanted to be in, in a space where our people could really invest in the community they live in. And so we have people from, we have a few people in Glenwood, but mostly Newcastle-Silt rifle. So we sold the property in Glenwood, began looking here. There is some use by right, but if you look at that map, it's pretty tough as a church to say, oh, there's our three spots we can look at. So we started looking into what it would take, and honestly, this building came up for sale. I looked, and this is, this is what I think is, was crucial for me to continue with the special use permit, is that the uses by right looked very similar to, to who we are. And I would guess that perhaps that's maybe something that isn't congruent with what is maybe desired, but it's there. And so I, I thought, well, looking at fraternal organizations, I mean, one of the languages in there is a indoor congregational facility. And I just thought that's, I don't know how that's not us coming in and using that property. So that looked encouraging to me on, on the request. I tried to bring that up a few times. It, it seemed like that part sort of just was like, well, yeah, that's there, but we may still say no. So that part, it, I don't, I don't know if that's what you intend, but that is what's in the code, and so that's where we just kept moving towards trying to get some, some attention looked at that, to say, how, how is use by right for a fraternal organization or an indoor congregational facility not, at least give us a pretty serious consideration. So that, that's it, but I, I, on the, on the other side of that, really, we, we want to create a space that is friendly to not just people that believe like us, but to create a space that benefits the town and the town's use in, in all kinds of ways. And, and it's, I mean, I don't, I can't get super-specific because I'm, I'm not sure how it will all work, but we're excited to try to join what you guys have done in saying we think community is important and relationships are important, and we want to try to use that facility to do that. So.
Further? Thomas, your question?
I don't, I don't have anything. I didn't know that they were purchasing the building until that was brought tonight. That actually makes me feel better about allowing the special use. I think when you own something, you put more into it, you care more about it. That building has also been tough to keep any retail going in. It just doesn't have a good retail feel to it, so unless someone's going to buy it, bulldoze it and build something that's going to be retail-oriented, I don't see it ever being a, a mecca of retail. You know, we already lose the neighboring property to the fire station, so that's not going to be a, a retail area. I think there's plenty of space on Main Street for retail to be developed, if that's what people wanted to do with it, so. You know, the, the loss of property taxes, which I was just trying to look up and see what that even is, but my mouse doesn't want to scroll, so.
It's like 7,500 bucks.
Yeah.
2021.
Right.
Not a huge amount of money.
Not a huge amount of money. I'd almost argue that they're going to bring more people to town that may spend money within the town and create sales tax dollars that are going to offset that, that loss of revenue. So I would be okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, they, when they get done, they may go to down to the new restaurants or whatever afterwards, spend money in town, so.
I feel like it's, it's outside the box, it's not really in line with our real retail community. However, it is in line with our community and values as far as bringing people downtown, you know, and that's what I'd like to see, you know, a church gets out and they're flooding the stores around them. You know, that's the kind of small town community that I envision, not this cookie cutter box stores that we're putting in, but, so yeah, I'd be in favor for this.
Well, as they develop and start doing more and more too, it's going to bring, not just on Sunday morning or whenever they're meeting, but throughout the week, it's going to be a positive meeting place for the community, so I, I mean, ideally, I mean, it'd be nice to have a huge tax revenue generating business there, but there hasn't been, and the near future may not be, again, like the mayor said, with them purchasing the building, if it's going to put some stability to that part of town, which would be nice, so.
Have you spoken with any of the other church leadership, church groups within the Town of Silt in a, as a preface to collaboration, working together?
I don't have a lot of, I have some relationship with some people at the Cowboy Church, not a lot there, and some of them know that we're talking about this, but I, it haven't had any formal talk conversations.
They're waiting for our approval? You're not, you're not legitimate yet?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I just mean, we haven't like sat down and had real serious conversations about us being here or not, yeah.
Because I, have you, the reason I ask that question is I think about it from a community development standpoint, and obviously faith can be a cornerstone of that in some communities, particularly smaller communities, so I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud and asking questions through the process of your engagement with the larger faith-based community in the Town of Silt and how you can collectively serve that group.
Yeah, yeah.
Not just as a building, but as a body.
Yeah. No, yeah, and I think that's good feedback, and I, I can say I'll work that direction. I mean, there are, there have been some conversations, just not, hey, we're here, and we are here, actually, we're meeting in the library right now, we've been here for a while, but.
What's upstairs on the whole thing?
Um, it's kind of, it's loft, it's loft, it's definitely needs, needs some, some safety protocols to use. There's no railing on the, on this end, on the, the west side. So storage, but, but there, it's a, it's a walkable floor, supported floor for only half of, or a little more than half of it. It's much bigger than what the county has listed to. It's, it's probably right under 5,000 square feet, the whole building.
Yeah, gotcha.
Can you speak to positive community outcomes from your time in Glenwood Springs? Not specific to any given faith or religious practice. Not specific to any given faith or religious practice, but sort of beyond the context of faith, larger community impacts that, that you either drove or were a participation in?
Okay. We've done outreaches, so we were on the west end of West Glenwood, up against kind of the Storm King Mountain. We, we did, for years, we did stuff for kids at Storm King, Storm King Trailer Park. We did outreaches there. We did sports camps at the middle school. We've done, we've done a lot of work in the AA world and, you know, built relationships. For years, really, my parents passed her there before I did, so, and they lived there. But in the, in the, in the, I've been there as a leader for ten years. And in, in those years, it got harder and harder to have community impact because of people living here. And so we, we started kind of losing that, and that's really one of the reasons we're relocating is we have way more connections where we all live and have more relationships and just feel like it will be beneficial to reaching into the, you know, asking people to come up and do an event on a Saturday when a lot of them have driven or worked there all week and reach into Glenwood. We, I, just to be honest, we haven't had as much impact as we'd like in the last number of years because of that demographic changes, that most of the people, eighty-five percent of our people live down here, so.
Can I ask one more question? I know, I don't want us to run long. Can you talk anything about the demographic of, of the group that attends your services?
Like, like just, yeah, so widespread age groups, we have quite a few young families. It's a church, let's, I'll give you numbers, just so you can have a picture. We have about fifty people attend on average, but we probably have about eighty people that are coming regularly. It's just they don't, you know, always show up at the same time. I would say young families make up. If you can help me a little bit, maybe, I'd say more than half. And then we have, you know, at the top end, some retired couples and single people. So I, I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it does.
I have a hand raised.
Is it from someone with the?
It's Amy.
Okay. All right. Yeah, if we can unmute Amy so she can speak on the applicant's behalf?
Hi, so this is Amy Perrin with Remax Elite Properties. And I am the property manager, or have been the property manager for the last two plus years at seven oh one Main. And so I just wanted to throw in there that what we're finding with that property is, when you were talking to the retail aspect of it, is a lot of, well, a lot of people might want the location. They're not willing to pay the value to be there, or they cannot, cannot afford the value to be there. And so that's been a real struggle for Francie, the owner of the property. And so that's one of the reasons that it's been listed, is because even like with affordable or legacy affordable homes, they're a service-based business that's not providing for sales tax. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
Okay. Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion from the board before I open up the public hearing?
No.
Anything else from the applicant before I open up?
Appreciate you getting us on this agenda. I know it's a big meeting.
All right. Okay. The time is now seven thirty-nine PM and I'll open up the public hearing in regards to resolution number twenty-six series of twenty twenty-two. Persons deciding to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
All right, thank you, Amy. And would anybody here in the public with us tonight like to speak on this agenda item? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at seven forty and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-six, series twenty twenty-two. Resolution approving the special use permit to allow for the location of the Sunlight Four-Square Church at seven oh one Main Street within the town of Silt, Colorado.
Second.
All right. Motion by trustee Claus to approve resolution number twenty-six, series twenty twenty-two, seconded by trustee Hanrahan. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six to one. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, yes.
Thanks, guys.
It's going to be a long one.
I know. All right, the next item on the agenda is resolution number twenty-six, series twenty, nevermind, ordinance number sixteen, series twenty twenty-two. An ordinance of the town of Silt, Colorado approving the rezoning for previously annexed lands once known as the Shanholzer Annexation and now commonly known as Autumn Ridge. And I will turn this over to Planner Chain.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And Sheila, could you make me the host, I guess?
It's all yours, Mark.
Okay, there we are. Okay, thank you. Okay, how are we going to operate? Oh, don't worry.
Yeah, sorry.
No. I have five minutes, Julie, so do you want me to wait for a minute?
No, go ahead. Yeah, if you want to go ahead and start it, while I try to.
All right, let me start here. And what we're going to do tonight is how I wish a lot of these would be, where I'm going to introduce the project, give some background. Then I'm going to hand it over to the applicant and they'll do their presentation. And then I'll come back and, is there, and what else do I need to say? Finish my presentation. Is there anything I'd like to comment on theirs? Naturally, how it should be, but a lot of times here, people, they don't feel comfortable and staff ends up doing the entire presentation. Something like that gets a little odd. But anyway, this is a, a project. I, I just call it Autumn Ridge. And just so you know, there's two aspects to this application. It's a minor subdivision sketch plan and a rezoning. That final plat is going to be taken care of, or should I say, it's going, it'll appear before you at the first meeting in January. Yeah, we had some, one, the questions about whether mineral rights owners were properly notified and let's not go there. But that, that item is going to be continued to a public hearing until your, until your January meeting. So tonight, all we're looking at is the rezoning. And just so you know, with the minor sketch plan, minor subdivision sketch plan, you haven't seen that very often. The sketch plan, the sketch is looked at by the planning commission. They take action on that, and then there's a three-month time period before the final plat comes before you. So the planning commission already acted on the sketch plan and they've recommended approval of that, okay? So we'll see more information on the site itself at your January meeting. I did put some background in the staff report regarding utilities, what is there, et cetera. So the applicant and the owners, they're John and Joy Zeller, Derek Walter, who is, you've seen before as the, the town's contract engineer, and David Moore. And Joy and Derek are acting as the representatives of my contacts. The civil engineer is Boundaries Unlimited. And your question is, well, who looked at it from the town viewpoint? We had Mountain Cross Engineering. They're a small engineering outfit, works in downtown Glenwood Springs. And they've looked at it, the sketch plan, and they also have comments in for the, for the final plat. And at least at this time, there is no project attorney or project architect. The location, here is the project itself, and it's just to the east of the Old Silk Cafe. If you look at, you can see my cursor, here's the Old Silk Cafe and, pardon? Oh, okay. And then right here is the Red River Inn. And just down right about there, the cursor's going off the map, that's where the Family Dollar's going in. So it's basically on six and twenty-four. The property location is actually, it's a good one, thirty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-one. So it's thirty-three miles from wherever the base point is. Existing zoning is R one. The proposal is to go to R three. And the surrounding land uses, I'll, once again, I'll just use the map. To the west, there is basically, right now, the old cafe is vacant, there's a Red River Inn. I have residential going around part of the west and to the north of the site. It's mostly single families, some are modulars, some are stick-built. And then there is also commercial to the east. And this area south, which is basically storage and some other commercial, that's, that's actually in the county. So there is no R one directly adjacent to this. The surrounding zoning is, and I'm going to go down a couple pages, okay? Here is the site right here. So B one, you have B one to the east. To the north, you have R two, which is a multifamily zone district. R three to the north and to the west, and this is R two again, and B two is where the Red River Inn and the cafe is. This blank area right there, that's under county jurisdiction. The proposed use immediately, just, you know, it's, right now, it's one single family house. And that single family is basically in the southeast quadrant of the property. And what the proposal is to keep the single family house, sell that so there's no debt on the property. And then the proposal is for the balance of the site to have a multifamily designation. And then they'd be coming in later on for a site-specific development plan, multifamily site plan review. Could be condos, could be a, a full-on subdivision. They've also talked about PUD zoning. They're still going through some of those gyrations in terms of design. The parcel right now, before anybody touches it, is three point zero seven acres in size, okay? And there's a sketch plan in your, in your packet that the planning commission has acted on. So tonight, we're just looking at the zoning itself. And I've gone through the fact that there are two elements to the land use application, only looking at one tonight. Planning Commission action. The planning commission did approve the sketch plan. And they recommended at this time that zoning not be changed. And that was at the September sixth meeting. Past history for the site, this was annexed to the town in nineteen ninety as part of the Shanholzer Annexation. There was no, there was no agreement. The, the approving ordinance said that no additional terms and conditions were imposed on the property at that time. The only thing I saw in a pre-annexation agreement was it allowed two horses to be stationed on the property or, you know, be on the property. And they did not require any tap fees to be paid. I'm not sure if it's for the single family or for a total of up to three. But it's minimal water and wastewater does not have to be paid for in terms of the tap fees. And the property went, it underwent a subdivision and PUD rezoning in two thousand nine. And at the end of the day, in two thousand eleven, they had gone through everything with the PUD zoning and the subdivision. It was scheduled for a final plan and final plat application with the board. And that's when the economy, you know, totally dropped out, instead of only partially dropping out. And the approval then was for thirty-four units of housing, and I'll just call it one flex lot, which could be from six residential units to twelve residential units. And I think it was what was viable, that, that lot was supposed to be set aside for my reading for some neighborhood commercial. And I did not finish every page reading of the old file, but that, that's a pretty good summary. I've gone through the location. Now, in terms of what's on the site, just so you know, there is a, the southeast area, excuse me, southwest area, there's a town water main which transacts the property. It's just the corner, but there's a, a full-on town water main there. There's a, there's wastewater main in six and twenty-four itself. There's irrigation ditch here at the northern part of the site. There, there's electricity to the site and at least twice, the application did have access permit from C dot. And I believe was up for, for thirty-six, thirty-six units. And then there was some things that they would have to do if they got more than thirty-six units developed on that site itself. And the other thing that was interesting, I mean, when I see there was nothing required by the town in nineteen ninety, when the area to the north, which is called the Missouche Annexation, that actually had access easement connections and utility connections, both to Valley Drive and the Cactus Drive from this site on through there. And if you looked at the application for the previous one, that actually had vehicular connections both to Cactus and to Valley Drive. This one, it's been represented to me that if this keeps moving forward to more planning and development, that they would not connect to Cactus Drive and Valley Drive, at least with the zoning designation that they are looking at itself. And other such things were provided with the application, including geotech and other such things. And I've gone forward with you and talked about the surrounding land uses and the zoning. Before I hand it over to Joy, she has a PowerPoint presentation. I just want to go over the differences in the town's residential zone districts. So R one, the proper name is that, it's the R one low-density residential district. That's from one to four dwelling units per acre, and that's intended for the principal use being single-family dwellings in low-density development, one to four dwelling units per acre, minimum lot size of seventy-five hundred square feet. R two, that's the town's R two general residential district. Principal uses are residential with the greater coverage of lot area and a medium density of between four and eight dwelling units per acre. That's what's encouraged in that zone district, and minimum lot size is five thousand square feet. And last but not least, R three, and the formal name for that is the R three residential manufactured modular, factory-built housing, high-density zone district. The R three district is established as the district to provide for single-family and multifamily residential development. And it also allows permanent manufactured modular and/or factory-built residences. And that density is suggested to be between eight and sixteen units per acre. The minimum lot area is four thousand square feet with a lot area per dwelling unit of twenty-five hundred square feet. Comprehensive plan, once again, that's the downtown area, which we were discussing the previous application. And downtown is designed to go from on the West First Street and out to Sixth Street eventually, Sixteenth Street on the east side of town. And with that, why don't I hand it over to the applicant? So please let them do their presentation. You can ask them questions. Then I'd like to finish up my presentation before we go on to your last questions or discussion.
I just got a quick question before you do that. You were talking about was on their, that house on the east end. Is that going to be part of it or is that going away?
It'll be Lot One.
The house is Lot One.
Yeah, I'll, we'll go over all that.
Okay, I just said, clear what was going on, okay.
So my name's Derek Walter. I'm with Boundaries Unlimited and one of the owners on the property. And with me is Joy Zeller. And we have our spouses behind us here, John Zeller and Tracy Walter, watching this evening as well. And Joy's just getting the PowerPoint presentation up. We appreciate the, the time you're taking to, to spend with us. We, we went and presented before P and Z and didn't really get the. We went and presented before P&amp;Z and didn't really get the, the direction we wanted and didn't really get any direction with it. But we've owned this property for a substantial amount of time, picking it up in two thousand and seven. Had lots of grand plans for it, as Mark had discussed, and the economy tanked. We went through a lot of expense and a lot of meetings with previous council and previous board to get to where we, we got to. And then unfortunately, had to put it all on hold and, and just make sure that we could maintain ownership of it. And we're really proud of ourselves for doing that because as a civil engineer in the development world, I watched a lot of my clients lose everything they owned. And here, we've got a fantastic piece of property. We've got some fantastic ideas for it. But we need to get out of the debt that we have still underneath us right now. And so that's really the first part of what we're doing here is get this first house subdivided off, get the zoning set up so that we can then present to you and prepare and present to you the next, the next plan. So I'll let Joy now take over because she's ready.
All right. Hopefully, I won't bore you tonight. I know it's already been a long meeting, so hopefully, we'll kind of get through this. Mark did mention quite a few of the things. So this is the property, kind of another view of this. He mentioned this as well. We're coming, hopefully, to you with two things. Tonight, we're coming to you for the rezoning of the property. It's currently R1, single, single residence, and we would like to do R3. So we'll be talking about that tonight. And then hopefully, in January, we will be coming back to you to propose a subdivision into two lots. We will, you know, this is for the rezoning, but we will be talking about that subdivision into two lots because they are intermingled. Our ability to subdivide it into two lots, the way that we have it planned, is somewhat contingent on the rezoning to R3. So we'll talk about that slightly tonight. So this is kind of an aerial view of this part of Main Street. And really, tonight's question is, what do we want for Main Street? And the previous applicant was about that, you know? How do we want our downtown area to look? What is our common goal as a community of, of investors? Both Derek and I were born and raised here, so we're not some out-of-town investor just coming in to try to make money. We want the best for the town. And we take it very serious that we are, want to be a part of the future improvements of the town. So the real question is, you know, what is this area? This is what it looks like now, some grass and weeds and I think even some concrete in there. So keep that in mind as we kind of talk through this tonight. I am going to go over a couple different things. Like Mark said, we came actually with this proposal pretty confident because when we went through this process back in two thousand and nine, it was unanimously approved all the way through and we had higher density than what we're proposing tonight. So we kind of came in, not having this presentation that we're getting ready to do with you, came into a huge crowd. We were thinking it was maybe gonna be a party, but it wasn't. It was not quite as fun. And as we started to do our presentation and Mark made his presentation and there started to come questions, we realized that there wasn't a common base knowledge. There were some questions being asked about zoning, about the comprehensive plan that made it apparent that a few of the board or the commissioners were not that familiar with the comprehensive plan. So I am going to be going over this just to make sure, and even with the, the community members, there's not very many tonight, like where we're at our last meeting. But we just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that we all have the same knowledge, that you understand why we're presenting, what we are presenting tonight. So I'm gonna go over that and then I'm gonna talk about logistics as well because you can talk about plans and maps and all of that, but then you also have to look at reality. So these are the things that we're gonna be going over tonight. And hopefully, I'll do it quickly, but if I go too fast, just let me know because sometimes I can talk fast. Mark mentioned this. I wasn't sure how much he was gonna go over. So R1, that's what we currently have, low-density residential, single-family. If you think kind of up on the mesa where Derek lives, that's your R1 for the most part, nice, large lots. R2, if you think of suburbia, that's R2, general residential, four to eight acre, or four to eight units per acre. Nice, nice yards. And then you're talking about your R3. It's more high-density residential, multifamily, and that's where we want to go. We absolutely believe that this is in the best interest of the town. It matches the comprehensive plan. It matches the comprehensive map as well as the zoning map. Mark talked about this too. This is our town zoning. It's almost comical when you look at this because it's just like the sore thumb, right? You're like, there's the R1 all by itself. So we do have R3 just north of us, as well as that residential two to the north and a little bit to the west. We do have a little bit of business also right along that Main Street. I apologize if I cough a little bit. I'm just kind of at the Attila end of being sick. When I look at this, I think of this, right? Like odd man out. We're really kind of like the, the little blue duck that wants to be like the other yellow duck. So we do, we don't match the area. But if you zoom out to the rest of the town, it really starts to become even more apparent. If you kind of look along Main Street more to the west, you can see that core downtown business area that you guys were talking about earlier. We have a lot of the business that's really starting to develop south of I-70. You can see that R1, there's bigger lots up on the mesa. And then you can just see our lone R1 down there, just kind of sitting down there that doesn't match the rest. So I can say this doesn't match, right? We can, maybe, I think, hopefully, all agree that it doesn't match the overall map. But that's just opinion and we want to make our, make sure that our decisions, or your decision, is based on facts and what we should be basing our decisions on. So the Silt Code of Ordinances says that the board and the commission shall utilize the comprehensive plan in their review and consideration of all land use applications, including annexation. So it really is based on what does the comprehensive plan say and does this match it? Is it in the best interest? So kind of talking about the comprehensive plan, this was interesting to me when I looked into it and learned about it. The comprehensive plan is reviewed and updated about every three years. The last time it was updated was in two thousand and seventeen. And it's a collaboration of Citizens of Silt, Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Trustees, Town Administration and Staff, and Property Owners. So this is the town community coming together and saying, this is what our vision for the town of Silt is. This is where we want to grow. This is how we want to grow. This is where we want high density. This is where we want lower density. What do we want from our town? And we all come together and we agree upon that. It also provides a roadmap for people who want to develop to know what they should be presenting to you so we don't waste anybody's time. It has a community vision, and I love this because anytime you have a vision, again, it gives you direction on knowing how you should vote. So it says, "Silt will strive to become a progressive, sustainable town that embraces the positive aspects of directed growth while capitalizing on a western rural legacy of self-sufficiency and strong community connections." I love the little part in there that talks about positive aspects of directed growth because I'm sure you're aware that there is a natural human instinct to just not want growth. Like, I think the IRS and developers and maybe bankers, it's just really fun to not like them and to protest. And we even have bumper stickers that say native, you know? The idea of like, I got mine, but no more. So to kind of make sure that as our vision, we understand that we need to embrace the positive aspects and then also make sure that our growth is directed and it's not just willy-nilly. I can speak to this directed growth because this is me on Home Avenue forty-plus years ago. And at this time, the town of Silt was less than one-fourth of what it is today. And so I've firsthand watched the town of Silt grow. And I know many of the homes that we currently live in today were not here back then. And so as I see families move in and enjoy the western, the lifestyle of western Colorado, I understand that that, that requires us to be open to growth. This is also me, my first day of second grade on Dome Albicourt, right next to the gas station in downtown. And as you can see, there's vacant property in the background. So, talking about the comprehensive plan for the town of Silt, I do not want to bore you guys because that's the last thing you need. And this looks like a pretty boring page. But I want to show this, this is page seven in the comprehensive plan. Our plan that we've decided as a whole community, we want to utilize in making our decisions for our growth. And right here is the growth framework. And I want to point out a couple things in this, but this isn't the most user-friendly way to view main points within a plan framework. So I'm going to use the exact words, but I'm gonna pull them out within the presentation. So directly from page seven of the growth framework, the very first bullet point is growth from the core. And it's the idea of making sure that you really build a compact center. Our property is within the growth core of the town. And having that, that higher density in the, in the core to make sure that you have that foot traffic and the pedestrian traffic and even just regular vehicular traffic on Main Street. Otherwise, what you have, if you don't have this higher-density commercial as well as residential in your core, you start having these pockets of density and it doesn't promote that strong core of walkability and services. So reminds me of chicken pox. Nobody wants chicken pox. So, the very first policy, A1, is promote, not just encourage, but actually promote compact development patterns by encouraging infill and new development within the tier-one primary growth area. And I'll be showing you the map again with that core downtown kind of map overlay on the, the downtown area. But we are in the tier-one primary growth area where our lot is situated. It also, in that same one, says promote infill development, redevelopment, which should be first priority for future growth instead of continuously expanding borders with annexations. Of course, it sounds nice. Everybody wants to have nice, large lots with lots of grass. But it does put a strain on the, the amount of land, the prices, our, our resources. So this is kind of a comparison, a subdivision on Silt Mesa that is seventy-eight acres. And it services thirty-five residential units. Our property is about three acres and what we're proposing is potentially about thirty-seven residential units. I think that we all know that water is becoming more and more of an issue on western Colorado as well. And people love grass, of course. But there's so many people that just want housing. And this allows us to preserve our water that's becoming more and more scarce. This is just kind of some information to kind of, kind of focus on that. The Department of Interior has reported that from two thousand to two thousand and twenty-one, we are in the driest twenty-two-year period recorded in more than one hundred years of record-keeping. The Colorado River Basin right now, in the year two thousand, it was at ninety-five percent threshold. And right now, we're at thirty-nine percent threshold. So we definitely need to be considering how we're going to, to conserve more water and grow, provide the, the housing that's needed for our growing area, yet conserve on water. And we believe that R3 housing in this area will do that. Moving on, on that same page seven, encourage medium-to-high-density land use within existing neighborhoods to achieve increased density, reinvestment incentives, retain character, and the downtown fill. We definitely want to make sure that we keep that Main Street looking better and better as the years go by. And we want to be a part of that. So here is that same zoning map that I talked about. The, the comprehensive plan also has a map that talks about, you know, where different zonings should go if, if we are going to rezone. And it talks about this downtown core. And so this is the zoning map. I took the comprehensive map and overlaid the downtown core, which, before I show it to you, the downtown core, according to the comprehensive plan, states that the downtown core shall be consisting of four different zonings. B1, B2, which are the two businesses, R2 and R3. So when you look at the comprehensive plan, downtown zoning, what's in red is considered the downtown core. I'm gonna go back. You can see, let me get my little, will it show? No, it won't show up there, okay? Yeah. So yeah, you can see our little R1 down there all by itself. And you can see we are in that downtown red core. What's also interesting is in that downtown core, there is no R3. Even though our comprehensive plan says that this is the area for R3 zoning, we currently do not even have the option to have R3 down there. Now, we have R3 to the north of us, but we don't have anything in, in that actual area. So really, to have the diversification, like Mark was talking about, you want businesses, but you want other things as well. We really believe that it's important to have that variety. And if you have R3 in the non-downtown district area, how much more appropriate is it to have it in the downtown area? You also know just over, notice overall that we have less R3 overall throughout the town of Silt. Which brings me to kind of our next point, which is promoting a range of attainable housing options. And again, this is from the comprehensive plan. We know, we can speak to this very, very directly because we own some rentals in the town of Silt. And even though it's great when we have a vacant rental, because usually we make a little bit more money, it's heartbreaking because the second we put it out on the market, we probably have within four hours, we have sixty, seventy applicants. I mean, it's just, you can't even keep up with it. People are so desperate for housing right now. And it was the same in two thousand and six when we were here. It was the same in two thousand and three when my husband and I moved back to the area. People need housing. People are being pushed out of the area. And it's heartbreaking when someone's saying, please, like, I'll pay you six hundred dollars a month more. Or, please, I'll pay you six months all at once if you'll just, what, what do I need to do? I haven't quite gotten to the top of the list. So having a range of attainable housing choices is really important. We do have modulators. We do have a lot of, a good number of trailers in the town of Silt. We have townhouses, but we don't have a lot of what you'll see, like going through Newcastle on the, on the right-hand side. And that's what we want to do. We want to create a beautiful project that will be beautiful for many, many years and be aesthetically appealing for the Main Street area as well as give people a range of attainable housing choices. This one actually really breaks my heart because it's just hard to see families struggle as much as they do. It also talks about striving for a diverse, integrated housing supply that is affordable and accessible to all citizens within all residential zoning districts. So again, we're kind of missing that R3 within the town of Silt as well as in that, especially in that downtown area. And then approve a variety of inclusive housing types that allow individuals and families to remain in the area. You know, I hear from people, you know, well, I bought in Silt because, you know, I, I want my kids to be able to play on the streets and, and not have to worry about that. And I get that. I have little kids and like I said, I grew up running around on the streets of Silt. But we also, as our children grow, we want them to have the opportunity to stay in the area. So we see young families struggling to be here, our Latino community, older couples as they're selling their homes. There's a lot of people that, you know, there's a lot of people that would like to have a big, you know, R1 house. But there's a lot of people that want to play in the mountains and they don't want the big yard because they want to play. And also graduates as they graduate, our younger generations as they graduate. So, that was the zoning and planning maps that I, you know, presented to you, kind of showed you that what we're asking for matches. We're not asking for something crazy. We have R3 right above us. We have, you know, it matches exactly what the comprehensive plan says. This is why the town staff and Mark are recommending approval of the R3 rezoning. But I also want to talk about the logistics. And I think this is where some of the neighbors got a little confused or maybe just didn't know. I shouldn't say confused. I think that they just didn't know exactly what the logistics would look like. I don't even know if they really wanted R2. I think that they would have maybe been happy if we just had R1 and left it vacant for them. But logistics always play into it because nobody's gonna do something and risk their, their shirt, you know, and their investment if it doesn't make sense logistically. So this is where the subdivision kind of comes in. So like I said, hopefully, next month, we'll be presenting this to you, the Autumn Ridge Minor Subdivision. And I'm gonna zoom in real quick right here. Here's the lot zoomed in. What we would like to do is sell off Lot One. That's where the existing house is right now. And then get out from underneath some of the debt that we have on the property. All of these processes take a lot of money. We've done it a couple times, so. And then we would have Lot Two to kind of take a deep breath. I know the town would have liked us to have more of a direction, but we're like, we first got to make sure that the town wants us to come in and, and make some of these improvements. So one of the big things with subdividing this into these two lots is currently the driveway of the property is right there. Did you see that little red and candy cane area? Right there. So we can't do that according to the C dot and, and we don't want to. It's super dangerous. Every time I come out of there, I'm like, whoa, trying to get onto Main Street. Um, so they're going to require, and we agree with it, a brand new entrance straight across from the storage unit entrance, um, across the street. It's going to be much wider. Um, it's going to be much nicer. The tricky thing with this, and this is why we need to bring this up at this meeting, is it's expensive. All of this is expensive and I'm not complaining. This is part of doing this as a, as a business. Um, but when you put in a front entrance like that, when you add that beautification all along Main Street, that first aerial view, it's a, it's a nice long strip. Uh, it's expensive. Uh, it's really expensive and we want to do it. But if you, if the town says, huh, uh, all we want is R2 here, or maybe R1, um, it doesn't allow for all of those beautifications and that easy access to, um, to, you know, to public transportation. When you just have kind of that suburbia feel. Uh, it just is. It's when you crunch the numbers, it financially doesn't make sense, especially with the lay of the lot. When we presented back in 2006, we actually, because of the lay of the lot, we had a road that connected from that main entrance up to Cactus Drive. We would prefer, again, looking at the comprehensive plan, to not have a through street there, to make all the traffic stay on Main Street. So we don't, um, interrupt what's going on up above in those cul-de-sacs. But like Mark mentioned, back in the day, when they added those two, um, additions, the Mizuchi addition number one and the Mizu- Zuchi.
Mizuki.
Mizuki, Mizuki? Um, number two, they did provide for access from this lot to those. Now that being said, we don't want to do that. We don't want R2. We don't feel that Main Street is the right place for a suburban type neighborhood. We believe that it matches the comprehensive plan, our plan to have R3. If we would, and this is why we're kind of like, oof, with not getting R3, it kind of puts a wrench in things. Because we lose at least two lots by doing this with R2. So what would make more sense is this. This is what R2 would most likely look like. And you can see that the existing house would still be subdivided off, but then we would just avoid all of the extra expenses of, um, working with C dot. C dot's expensive too. Not complaining, but it just is. Um, and then come off of Cactus Drive, Valley Drive, and then have the individual kind of suburban type neighborhood. The town does not want this. We don't want this. Um, what the natural course of action, if this was the case with development, would be most likely, um, you know, have that extra traffic that the neighbors were concerned with, um, at the last meeting, coming through their subdivisions. We don't want that. That's, doesn't create that, that nice flow that you're trying to get in your downtown area. Another thing that will absolutely happen is because they're nice single family properties, fences will come up. It's very sloped on that far southwest corner. So it's, it's kind of visible that, that uphill. So as people are coming down Main Street, li- very likely you'll be able to see in their backyards, you'll see bikes and things like that and dogs and all of that. So we don't want this. Um, this would be, um, the, what the more affordable development, um, proposition with an R2. Doesn't match the comprehensive plan. It doesn't, the town doesn't want it. We don't want it. Um, and so what we would like to do, and again, this is not what we're proposing, that we're just talking about the rezoning. If we go to, up to about 36 units, we don't have to have that through road up to Cactus Drive. We can have a parking lot, have multifamily hu- hu- housing units, keep the space as open as possible. We definitely, when it comes to the landscaping, we want it to be very water efficient, but yet very pretty. Um, so we don't know if it'll be this number of units or if we'll, we'll clump some more. Um, but this is kind of the overall feel that we're, we're, we're looking for. Keeping the traffic on Main Street, keeping that walkability in the downtown area, having that good access, um, to public transportation and keeping everything on Main Street. This is why the town is, is, is recommending approval for this. Oh, and public transportation. I forgot how many, how many things I, uh, how many animations I made. So it does have that conformity with the comprehensive plan. And this is really your guide, not necessarily my opinion or, or really anybody's opinion. But does it conform with the comprehensive plan? Comprehensive plan is 53 pages. I read through all of it very carefully. And I just want to kind of point out the main points and how, what we're proposing matches the comprehensive plan. So it talks a lot about the growth from the core, keeping the core condensed, having B1, B2, R2 and R3, um, which we don't currently have in the downtown area at all. So it's talking about having that in the core. Keeping the town compact, which it fits within those pages of the comprehensive plan. Creating an infill project near the center of the town instead of expanding and growing and taking up more land and more resources. It keeps the traffic on Main Street. Um, you know, we, if, if it come, gets to the point with business, which again, there's so many business properties in the town of Silt that are much more conducive to businesses than the slope and topography of our property. Um, but if we did have to do, uh, business, it would most likely again, have to have that through street, um, which we would prefer not having that. Really promotes walkability, which is a really big thing within the town of Silt and within our own plan that we've agreed upon. And then it's, it is adjacent to R3 and high density to residential. So we're not asking for anything that isn't already around us. It minimizes urban sprawl, preserves agriculture and natural resources, which I'm very passionate about, as we all should be. Promoting attainable housing choices, encouraging high density in the, in the downtown area. So all of those things, um, are, are completely in line with the comprehensive plan. And again, the comprehensive map, um, suggesting that those four de- uh, four zoning areas are in that downtown area and we are right smack in that downtown zoning area. Um, and so it fits within that comprehensive map as well. So I talked about the zoning and planning map. I talked about our comprehensive plan and I talked about the logistics. On all acc- chords, um, we fit. That's why the town is, is recommending approval. I, to be honest, I think the last meeting, a lot of emotions got brought into play. Um, and I don't blame anybody. We're all humans. We all have emotions. But I don't feel like they had enough facts about what they should be basing their decision on. And then there was a whole lot of emotion. Um, so we believe that this is great for everybody. And I think that's it. Oh, yeah, that's it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hopefully it wasn't too long. Sorry. I was trying to talk fast and I was like, I'm talking too fast.
Okay, let me, let me wind up. I'm going to be, uh, cutting to the chase here pretty quickly. So, um, I mentioned the comprehensive plan and I'm looking at it from a high view. And Joy was looking at it, um, at street level, I'll just say. What was interesting about the downtown designation, uh, going all the way out to 16th Street. And this part of the road, actually both part of it, um, gets a bit topographically, um, disconnected from Highway 6 and 24. I mean, when I'm driving out east, you know, once I get past the Silk Cafe, there's a, there's a little bluff now. And if you have downtown style buildings, I don't know if they'd, how visible they would, you know, they would really be there. Joy is correct with the, uh, suggested zone districts for the downtown area. Uh, they support B1, B2, R2 and R3, not R1. Uh, utilities are there and access is pretty good. So it is a good place to have your higher densities, um, for town and not, you know, push the urban boundary itself. So for those general reasons, I am in support that this, uh, meets the comprehensive plan. Should be, um, uh, considered to be approved, uh, from R1 to R3. The review criteria, uh, I believe on a point by point basis that the application does meet the criteria. Uh, the first one is the amendment will promote the public health, safety and general welfare. Uh, the second one is the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The purpose is stated, uh, in the code and the proposal for rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, the amendment is consistent with the stated purpose of the proposed zone district. Uh, four, the amendment will not likely result in significant adverse effects upon the natural environment, including air, water, uh, et cetera. The amendment will not appear to result in negative impacts. Uh, the amendment will not likely result in material adverse negative impacts to other properties adjacent to or in the vicinity of the subject property. Now, uh, one of the representations is that they're not going to go through Cactus Drive and Valley Drive. You'd have to wait to see that for a site specific development plan. But I think they are making their efforts to minimize impacts, uh, to the residential neighborhoods that express concern. And I guess what they're really looking at is try to have that ditch up there as, as a buffer, which, uh, is basically a, a pretty good idea. And then last but not least, facilities and services, including roads, transportation, water, gas, electricity, police, fire protection, um, they're available to serve the subject property. And, uh, that's true and noted before, the transportation infrastructure is there and it is easy to connect to, uh, all utilities. So staff recommends that you approve the, um, rezoning applications. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the stated purposes of the proposed zone district. Utilities are present. Uh, access is adequate. And, um, if you wish to move on with the rezoning, you should finish up with that, uh, minor subdivision, which you will see a month from now, and have a subdivision improvements agreement. And then when and if there is a site specific development plan for more density, then you have a development agreement to make sure that the, um, applicant or owner, uh, extends the utilities and everything is taken care of from a cost perspective. So I do have a draft, uh, rezoning ordinance in your packet. Uh, those conditions may have to be updated depending on where your, uh, discussion goes. And this will be the first reading of that ordinance. And you would also see that, uh, with amendments as appropriate at your next meeting. And with that, I'm finished.
Great.
Um, yeah.
I just want to make one point before we start our discussion is, um, we need to not discuss the, splitting into the two lots at this meeting. We need to remain quasi judicial in that aspect. So.
Just zoning.
Yep, just strictly zoning in this conversation. Yeah.
Got it.
Um, Mr. Chain, uh, P and Z recommended denial. Can you elaborate as to their reasoning?
There was a lot of discussion from the neighbors and it was all against the proposal. And, uh, that's, that's one reason why I think they did just say not, no, they said it's not appropriate to move forward at this time and during their discussion. Now you don't know if the applicants are going to go back, reconsider, come back with something different. But at that time, um, that was their recommendation. Don't change it at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a public hearing first or do we do comments?
Well, we can, we can discuss. Yeah, we can discuss first and we'll open up the public hearing.
Well, in my opinion, it, it makes all the sense in the world to change it to R3. I mean, there's R3 just to the north. There's R2 just to the northeast. You know, it, it, there's no other R1 around there, right? So three acres right down in that area, you're going to have large lots with bigger homes? Like it doesn't seem to match at all. You know, I, I guess, I'd be interested to know what you guys think, but in this world, R3 makes a lot of sense to me, even before the presentation. You know, I looked at the zoning map and it's like, oh yeah.
No, I, I agree. R1 doesn't, doesn't fit.
R3. You're going to put 36 residents in less than three acres, trying to get out on Highway 6? I mean, especially when that's a business district. I mean, sticking with the business district is the way to go, just to keep revenue coming in and having an R3 elsewhere out to where they can actually get in and out of highways, uh, off of Highway 6.
I know, but it's not going to be zone business district. They're not proposing that.
Yeah, but I mean, do a high density home right there coming on to 6?
It's where it should be.
How are you going to get the traffic in and off 6? Like, and that's a, that's a traffic jam.
The new entrance that they're going to have to build.
Yeah, that's a traffic jam for everyone else on 6. I mean, that's, that's just shoving a lot of, I mean, it's taking away, um, our open space. We're shoving a giant apartment complex area together and, and.
Sam, we do this every time. It's not, it's not open space. Nobody, it's not open. It's private property. It's not a park. You can't go play football in it. There's.
I'm just saying like.
Isles of concrete. Like it's not pretty open space. It's just open space not serving a purpose.
It's a concrete jungle now. That's what we're creating here in town of Silt. And that's not what the citizens, I don't believe any, obviously homeowners have, uh, have decided against it or have been pushed back on it. I mean, we, I don't think citizens here deserve a concrete jungle. We're here to have our small community and have 37 plus residents. That's, I mean, every residence has two vehicles. That's 60, 70 vehicles. I mean, you have two adults in both, all the, in each home coming out on Highway 6. Uh, it doesn't make sense.
I think it's a good idea.
So I think just for a little backstory, I think maybe, I don't know if Justin was on the board when the comp plan stretched out that far was because there was talk of the grocery store going on that parcel. That's why it became part of the downtown core out that far.
The mayor's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, what I don't want to do is see the discussion get too far afield. And by that, I mean, um, when you start talking about specifics of transportation, of improvements, those are basically, uh, taken care of as part of the access permit. If there's not too many, um, houses on or dwelling units there, you know, you have to make some improvements, but not too many. If you're proposing 100, and I said 100 because it's above and beyond what they're even considering, the improvements are something totally different and they, you know, the C dot tries to help you mitigate that. So that's the scope of what exactly those improvements will be. That's more for a future development plan and access permit.
If there was a grocery store though, wouldn't there be more traffic there if there was a grocery store?
I was just making that point is that's why the downtown business district stretches.
Yeah, gotcha.
That far instead of stopping at the Red River Inn and that being not the downtown core.
Okay, gotcha.
If the R3 development were, were somewhere else to sort of follow up on the hypothetical, doesn't that traffic eventually end up on that road anyway?
But not directly. They could come off on, they come off on other, all the other streets coming in the main.
So then we're just putting, we're just putting more, we'd be putting more, um, traffic on all of our other streets instead of allowing it to be just on our Main Street.
On the residential streets and not on the highway.
Which is designed to haul, which is designed to handle the traffic.
It's a highway. Disperse your traffic, which makes sense. That's what logic. You disperse traffic to the community instead of one major vein to the center.
I think we've, we've discussed density and, and I certainly agree with you on some aspects of that. When we talked about open space, we've, we've gone back and forth about that before. Um, but I actually, uh, agree with Mayor Protem that this is a good example of where density should be. It's adjacent to the highway. If it's causing traffic, it's causing it for what, half a mile? Instead of distributing it over a much larger area. And again, there's going to be a, at some point, a fundamental necessity in terms of affordability and density to pick a spot. We can't, we can't not have it and keep housing affordable. The downside of affordability is density. That's the offset. That's the compromise. So if we, if we approach it with the mindset that we have to create a, um, a compromise where we can find a happy medium, have affordability, not subsidized affordability, retail affordability, right? Cause that's another thing that the, that the board has talked about frequently. I think this represents a good compromise.
I agree with that.
Perfect, but a good compromise.
And we've had a lot of discussions about, like affordable housing. We've discussed, like, right, subsidize affordable housing. How do we do that? How do we not do that? And, and I, Derek, I think you're right. Like, the idea is to find the spot that can take the, the high density home, homes to bring that availability. You know, I'm in real estate. People call me and they ask for rental. I just tell them, I can't help them.
You, wrong number.
Yeah, like I can't help you. Sorry. There's nothing out there. You know, we have, we have an opportunity here to allow somebody to develop a parcel that I think makes great sense for high density housing. There would be open space and parks within that. There would be open space and parks within that. There has to be, right? We could discuss all that, but anyway, I think the R three zoning right there makes a ton of sense. So I'd be all for it.
Well, one thought to consider is an R three is more dense. So downside of having that many people in that small area of one way in, one way out, if something catches fire, it's one way in, one way out.
But I would have to imagine, like, with us just changing it to R three zoning, there's a lot of other aspects that have to go into that that relate to safety access for the fire department. I mean, Jerry can probably speak to that, right? Like, they're not going to allow them or us to allow them to build something that's going to be deemed unsafe. I mean, take my neighborhood. I don't know, there's seventy homes up there?
Yeah.
One way in, one way out. I bought up there, I mean, you know.
No, then that's true.
Yeah, you know, and that's a much larger area. I mean, I don't know what the, I don't know what the area of Mesa View Estates is, but I would imagine it's much larger than the three acres that this is, so.
But yeah, like I said, that was my thought, you know, having that many people in there. If there is a fire or something, you know, it's, they're going to panic anyway just to get out. So I just didn't know, you know? And, and personally, um, personally, I kind of think it's a conflict of interest. I said it before, you know, on Derek Walters' part, because if we change this to R three, he can profit by that and make more money. So I, I, I just want to state that and him being an engineer. If he was going over this for another applicant, there are things on there that he would recommend done that so far he isn't doing himself.
I don't know, I, I don't even know. How's that a conflict of interest if somebody wants to make money for themselves?
He works for the town.
But the town isn't having him do the work on this property, the engineering on this property. Why does someone else do it?
Yeah, I think Planet Chain even mentioned the company.
We have Mountain Cross looking at that stuff. And right now, you know, it's more for the minor subdivision. If it was a larger development plan and.
Granted, he's not a board member, but.
He'd be looking at that, too.
Still employed by the town.
No, he's not. He's contracted by the town.
And we, we have teams and other parties in place.
Yeah.
To, to act as a check and balance against any, any malfeasance or, or misaligned interests. I guess I'm confused about the point.
So it, it's important to recognize that the application in front of you is for zoning, and that really there's not any engineering that goes along with a zoning request. There are certainly implications, which as board members, you're welcome to inquire into. But the request for a rezone doesn't trigger an engineering review. And as, as Mark mentioned, you know, when, when Derek, and he was very forthright, said, hey, we're, you know, we're going to be looking at doing a minor subdivision, we reached out, we retained a conflict engineer, Mountain Cross Engineering, and they have been providing analysis for the town. So I, I, I just want the board to feel comfortable that, you know, we're, we acknowledge that Derek normally is providing review function for the town, but in this instance, we've gone out and undertaken to secure the proper professionals to help us do that without Derek's participation.
Thank you.
Duly noted, thank you. Um, I mean, I just feel that R three is just too dense. I could support R two, you know, I, I can definitely support R two. And, you know, and that's based on, I believe, R three is just too dense there in that portion. And, you know, here's the minutes to the P and Z meeting. And after reading, you know, the P and Z minutes and everything, you know, it seemed like the consensus there was R two, you know? And yes, R one, it, it shouldn't be R one, you know? But, you know, I, I could definitely support R two. And, you know, and, and that, you know, does take into account, you know, the citizens' comments, you know, at, at the P and Z meeting. And it does take into account, you know, what the commissioner's comments were, too. So I mean, that's, that's where I stand on it, because I don't want to see it turn into, you know, a bunch of modulators. And the C dot permit says it's for thirty-six tiny homes. Is that still a consideration?
Tiny homes don't mean modulators. What we've contemplated in there, tiny homes is a size designation. So what we've looked at is what is, what is the market looking for? And what can we accomplish on this property? In a lot of ways, the market's looking for affordability. And affordability unfortunately means when the cost of square foot building is as high as it is, it means dense, it means smaller units, and it means planning those smaller units. So we've looked at, you saw the, just the blocks that were there.
Yes.
Those represent fourplexes. They could be either in condominium or apartment style, so rental or ownership. That's one concept we've looked at. We've looked at duplex tiny homes, basically two side by side. We've talked a lot about found, on foundation is our primary goal with that. You know, one of our partners used to be a home builder in the area, has a lot of experience and all of that. And so we've been able to, to learn from his guidance in affordability and what it takes. We've also watched across the highway with what's been accomplished next to the K O A. With those tiny homes, and again, those are all beautiful. They all look the same, but they're beautiful. They're, they're well-built, they're stick-built, they're on foundation, they're not. And so the notion of tiny homes being trailers pulled behind a car isn't what we're looking at there. But what we had to find out at the same time was the accessing off of the highway, trying to avoid going through Cactus and Valley Drives, means that we have to work really closely with C dot. So we had to go in beforehand, before really coming to you, because remember back, we already went through a huge application, which, I'm not sure, Chris, but I thought you were on the P and Z when we got our, our last approvals in two thousand and eleven.
No, I joined P and Z in two thousand and seventeen.
Oh, did you? Okay, so maybe you're just always present, working for the town this time. So my, I apologize for that. But we had unanimous approval for up to forty-six units on the whole property. So now we're sitting here talking about thirty-seven, you know, including the one house that's there. And we're thinking to ourselves, we're bringing down the density, we're planning better. Before, we had row houses.
Yeah.
We had.
And they don't necessarily want to see row houses.
Throughout there, and then we got unanimous approval with them. You've got to remember that, it was unanimous. So we're thinking, this is a very good plan. We've had time to rethink it, we've looked at how the market's changed a little bit. We've looked at how costs have changed with it. And so we do have a lot of ideas on how to make this work and work well without it looking like a trailer park. We're not looking for a trailer park, we're looking to plan this out. But it does take units to do that. And so we had to go to C dot and say, to avoid the insane costs of highway improvements, what's the maximum number of vehicles we could put onto this property? And so in working with another engineer, a traffic engineer, and all of that permitting process, again, trying to keep my conflict out of that a little bit, they worked with C dot and said, you can have the one single-family house that you have, and you could have up to thirty-six that are, they have different classifications. They have modular classification, they have multifamily classification. We were talking about the size of units being in the range of, you know, eight hundred, or I'm sorry, six hundred to a thousand square foot range is what we were just talking about. They said, well, that kind of sounds like we've heard about with tiny homes. So they said, why don't we find a compromise with what's in that? Because they don't have a tiny, they don't have a specific criteria for it. So they said, the middle ground between the modulators and the multifamily is what we'll call you, and we'll put that down as tiny homes on your permit. And so no matter what we do, we have to stay within that criteria, unless we want to go and spend a million and a half dollars on highway improvements, which will never happen, which is a big piece of why there is no grocery store there, because nobody was going to spend that kind of money.
Yeah, for turning lanes.
I mean, you can't even get it next to Come and Go. And that's, that's one of the best places for retail in, in all of the town of Silk. And they're not going to come up to our property, unfortunately. We would love it if they would and just buy it off of us and say, hey, here's a bunch of mon, here's a big bag of money, and we'll take it, we'll do all the improvements. They're just not going to, it's not realistic. So we've been really thinking and planning out, and so that's why you saw the word tiny homes in there. We've been thinking about the concepts, and we gave you just a glimpse of what we're looking at. In part two, I think we gave the glimpse because P and Z didn't have that glimpse, and so it was a stumbling block, we felt like, for them. So we wanted to help you see that what we're thinking in general and how it can work, and how it fits within all of the town's code and criteria, that it's being reviewed by outside sources, not me and myself, and to produce a, a really promising project for this is what we're aiming for.
Yeah, you guys had a really good presentation.
Joy, fantastic.
So the lots aren't for sale. They're, you're going to, you're going to maintain them and then rent them out.
At this point, that's our primary concept. Again, we're not presenting that aspect to you yet. We had to go to the other one you saw up there with the road. That's what, that's what fee simple lots looks like.
Right.
That's, that, that's the only way to make that work, because we have to stay off the highway.
Well, tiny homes are not affordable homes.
It depends on, I mean.
Hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a tiny home in an eight hundred dollar a month lot.
We don't know what they're doing.
We need to discuss zoning, not what they're doing, so.
And also, the, the, the word affordable housing keeps getting thrown around here, and that's, you know, that's part of the discussion.
Well, no, what kind of housing is not part of the discussion? It's whether high-density fits this or not.
And also what we're trying to do, too, talking about like the concrete jungle, like, that is absolutely what I would hate to see personally, as, as a business, too. You know, we don't want to see that either. And that's why when you create a parking lot, like what we kind of showed as kind of a conceptual idea for the R three, and having more, you know, condominium type, you know, whether it's apartment-type condos or multifamily, you know, dwellings, you minimize sprawl, right? You pull it in, you have more families taking up a smaller space of property, so you have more room to have landscaping. And then also even just with the, the parking lot area, I think that accommodated, what did you say? Like, two, two parking spots per unit plus.
Actually, two plus.
Yeah, two plus. So that would be, you know, kind of conceptually, how much space would be taken up by the parking lot area? And again, really making sure that we condense the use of concrete and building and have more open space versus everybody having their own grassy little yard. Yeah, fenced and grassy yard. We want it to be more of a common, common area where it's open and green, not too green because we want to conserve on water, but just really having a beautiful landscaping that's maintained by the community.
And that's my, my other thought, you know, R three, you know, more dense, there's more homes there, so there is more water being used. And with our water plant kind of in an iffy state right now, I don't know if we necessarily want.
We need, okay, I'll, this is zoning, we need, we need water taps.
Yeah, well, that's what I meant.
We address that, we're going, listen, we're going to address the water plant. We're going to find a way to build a new water plant. And if we decide that our water plant right now can't handle this, and if we just completely stop with development, we'll put the town back thirty years if we do that.
I'm not saying stop, I'm just saying it's a consideration.
We have been told the water plant can't handle this. That's like where my mind, you guys are boggling my mind. We have been told we are max capacity, running the plant hard as can be, without another single drop going to any other residents that we already committed to that aren't online yet. I mean, that's not, no one's seeing that. Like, I'm like, am I in the wrong meetings at the time when they're telling us these? That's their, they're engineers, ORC, or something telling us we are done handing out water until, until we resolve that issue.
It's being resolved.
It's not being resolved, we're on the board.
All right, so do we have any further discussion about the zoning on this property from the board before I open up the public hearing?
Not for me.
It'd be good to do the public hearing, because then we can go from there.
Okay.
No, I don't.
All right, the time is eight forty-eight PM, and I'm going to open up the public hearing. I do have one point of order here. Our packet says this is ordinance number thirteen, our agenda says ordinance number sixteen. So which one are we really?
Sheila?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Mr. Mayor, please.
All right, so I'm going to open up the public hearing for ordinance number sixteen, series two thousand and twenty-two, and Orange of the Town of Silk, Colorado, approving, or approving the rezoning for a previously annexed land once known as the Shanholzer Annexation, and now commonly known as Autumn Ridge. Persons desiring to make public comments on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone today, Mr. Mayor. I do not show any raised hands.
Okay, we do have a couple of people here in the public with us. Yeah, we, we do that online stuff first and then move to the, the live public. So if you'd like to, if you guys, yeah, if you guys can grab a seat real quick and we'll. Yeah, if you'd like to come up and sit at the table and then state your name. During public comments, we don't really have a discussion. We just listen to public comments, and each person is allotted three minutes.
My name is Albert Ferguson, I live at two ten Valley Drive. I don't agree with that. If they want to put thirty-seven homes in there and with one access into it, there's going to be a traffic jam and you're going to have accidents on that. Try and get off, try and get on six and twenty-four, getting off six and twenty-four. I was told one time that that's why they put that roundabout out there, out there, is they had too many people trying to get out and too many people coming in at a high rate of speed. So they had to put the roundabout in there to slow people down. And if you put a highway, put that road going into the highway, you're going to have people coming up from town, downtown, and people coming down. And you've got people coming from Sixteenth Street going one way or the other, and you're going to have a traffic jam there. And there's been a few times that I've come off Sixteenth Street to get on six and twenty-four, and I've had to wait there for quite a while for traffic both ways, coming down both ways. And I think it's, if there's going to be an accident there, if, if you keep, if you have thirty, at least thirty-seven homes or more there, you're going to have double, like, as Flor said there, you're going to have, each person's going to have at least two cars there coming out. And, and I feel that you're going to, you know, you're going to have an accident there or something like that there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, Tina Cox, I live on Valley Drive. And if you have ever driven down Cactus Drive, there's not a lot there that could handle R three. I know it's zoned R three, but there's nothing big enough to even put multifamily housing on there. Also, I believe since we're having trouble with water, I don't think it's going to help to have that many more people. Right now, there's forty-two homes in Silk for sale. There was thirty-four when we went did the planning and zoning, it's already at forty-two. Plus, you have eighty-six condos going in down the street, a quarter of a mile. They're between business and business, why not make it a business? We need more business, we need that taxes coming in every day. So just, just my thought, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Henderson, I live on Cactus Drive. I think if you were here for the first one, a lot of people were more concerned about the traffic going up and down Cactus and Valley Drive. My concern is with the R three, without having an actual mapped-out plan, what's to stop them from developing and taking all that traffic down those two tiny streets? And I think that was a lot of the community's concern when they were here last time as well.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers with us like to speak to this agenda item? All right. Seeing none then, the time is eight fifty-three PM, and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board and a motion. I guess I think we could probably address that the, the board would have an opportunity to address traffic potentially on Cactus and Valley Drive at a site plan. It doesn't sound like the applicants want to send any traffic down those two roads anyway. I do see the, understand the safety factor coming onto Highway six. That is a lot of, potentially a lot of traffic going on there. The flip side of that would be a lot of people that live in tiny homes or more one-car-oriented people, bicyclist, walking. So a lot of them might not even have the two cars, so it's really hard to justify denying this because of what there potentially might be. I personally feel that there's a lot of these issues that were brought up that will be addressed further down the line as this, this goes through. Right now, it's, is high-density the appropriate thing for this piece of property? It's not going to be developed into a business, it's not going to be developed into a, one person's going to buy it, tear the house down, and build a big house and have a great big, huge green lawn in this, this parcel. R two, I don't, you know, financially, I don't think it's feasible for that to be an R two piece of property, so it'll be left with what it is. You know, I'm, I'm in favor of, of approving this as an R three zone district.
I'm also in favor of R three zone district there.
I agree with the mayor, I think we, there are so many more steps in the process that we'll have an opportunity to discuss water, we'll have an opportunity to discuss traffic and rights of way. Granting zoning is not a silver bullet to anything and everything they may want at some point in the future, whether it's three hours or three months from now. I think, I, I think we collectively welcome you to come back as those processes are happening. And have your voice included in the conversation. I don't think granting this zoning answers all of those questions. Am I inaccurate in that? Planner Jane?
You're fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a problem with the density, I don't think they're gonna be turning on water taps tomorrow. I think this is one step of many, and I think the, the plant's gonna be in progress. We can always delay development as it relates to water requirements and make sure that we're not creating an environment where somebody turns on a tap and sand falls out. I think we, again, we have measures and processes in place to the mayor's point, I don't have a problem with R three.
They were not issuing building permits today, we're just, we're just zoning a piece of property.
That's correct.
Yeah. And this does, definitely does not say that thirty-seven units is what the town even wants there.
No, and they could.
This is just saying we want R three, which could potentially have.
Up to.
Up to.
Yeah.
And as seen on Cactus Drive, it doesn't have to have high density, it just allows for high density.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance number sixteen, series twenty twenty-two. An ordinance of the town of Silk Colorado approving the rezoning for the previously annexed land once known as the Shanholzer Annexation. And now commonly known as Autumn Ridge from R one to R three with the three noted items in our, um, packet.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mayor Pro Tem not to approve ordinance number sixteen, series twenty twenty-two. From R one to R three with the three noted items in the packet. That was seconded by trustee Hanahan, all's in favor?
Aye.
You said not approve?
No, to approve.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we both heard not.
I thought not.
No, to approve, yes.
Okay, yeah.
To approve, yeah.
Okay, I was like, wait, did they say not?
This is to approve, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes four to three.
Four to three.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, can we go, just for the record, can we do a roll call vote on that one, please Sheila?
Certainly can. Trustee Seepert?
Nay.
Trustee Hanahan?
Yay.
Trustee Flores?
Nay.
Trustee Klassen?
Nay.
Trustee Brittenall?
Yay.
Pro Tem not?
Yay.
Mayor Reichel?
Yay.
Passes four to three.
All right.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the rest of these steps and we'll see where we go from there.
Well, and, and just to remind the board, this is an ordinance. Uh, that this will be back in front of the board in, uh, at the first January meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, for second reading.
Second reading.
Yeah, this is first reading as well.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Long meeting, I know. Oh, yeah, did we need to continue the other part?
Yeah, we're gonna.
We're gonna do that right now.
Right now. Uh, the next item on the gen is a request to continue the public hearing for the Autumn Ridge Minor Subdivision plat. So, would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to continue the public hearing for the Autumn Ridge Minor Subdivision final plat.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mayor Pro Tem not to continue the public hearing for the Autumn Ridge Minor Subdivision plat, that was seconded by trustee Brittenall, all's in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, that was a lot.
Sawyer couldn't even drive it down here.
We said it was an hour.
Yeah, I heard you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is resolution number twenty-eight, series twenty twenty-two. A resolution to adopt the town of Silk's budget for calendar year twenty twenty-three, appropriate funds and levy property taxes. And I will turn this over to Administrator Lehman and Treasurer Tucker.
All right, Board of Trustees, this is the night we've been building toward for several months. And that's the adoption of the twenty twenty-three budget. Thank you, Joy, appreciate it. So, um, I've got a PowerPoint, which probably shouldn't surprise you. I actually don't have a copy of it in front of me, so I'll have to go off of whatever it is Sheila puts up there. And we'll tag team this a little bit, uh, I've got Trey here in the room and I've got, uh, Amy at home. Il will try not to put too much work on her since she's not feeling it a hundred percent, but we'll, we'll try to get through this in, uh, less than twenty minutes. We've spent a lot of time on this, um, you all, of course, have seen it. Uh, but for the benefit of anybody tuning in for the first time, uh, we want to get through it. So next slide, please, I need to have one of those little remote things, that was pretty cool, I didn't see, yeah, we just clicked right through it. Beep beep.
Not in the budget.
Okay, we'll put that in the twenty twenty-four budget. Well, there you go, okay.
Sheila's your remote control.
There you go, I'll just.
She needs a new battery.
She, and she's very reliable as a remote control too. Well, first I wanted to just say that in, in your packet, you, you undoubtedly noticed the, uh, board or the, uh. Budget, uh, budget memo, budget letter. Um, and, uh, hopefully that lays out sort of a spending plan, what's happened in twenty-two and where we're going. Uh, certainly, uh, we're open to any questions that, that that may have generated. As you read it. Okay, so a town's budget, uh, obviously we've talked about this before, but it's a reflection of anticipated town revenue. It basically tells us how much we think we're gonna make in a year, how much revenue we're gonna bring in. It's gonna, provides us with a blueprint of, uh, providing services. Uh, all of our services from water wastewater, police to public work, to our new position. Uh, that would, uh, uh, we're gonna call our, I'm gonna get this wrong, community. Service, community service coordinator. Well known as, more, more well known as code enforcement. Um, so those kind of, all of our services, it's a reflection for community priorities, hopefully everything that we provide. It's something that someone in the community finds value in. And if, if somebody doesn't, uh, I mean, if enough people don't, uh, wanna take advantage of those source, those services, then we shouldn't be doing them. Uh, it's a path toward accomplishing, uh, Board of Trustees' goals, you're obviously representatives of the constituents here. Uh, you bring things to this board and this budget that, uh, that you hear from your constituents and hopefully those things form your goals. It's a tool for accountability for all of us sitting in this room. Uh, and, uh, the staff, uh, is accountable to you and you're accountable to your, your taxpayers and your constituents. And last but not least, it, it provides a financial, um, plan or roadmap for us to, to move things forward. All right, so, um, any questions on any of that?
Huh.
So, uh, major sources of general fund revenue coming up for twenty twenty-three, as usual, this list does not change that much. Sales tax, property tax, use tax, highway users tax, building permits, mineral lease severance. Uh, county sales tax share, the county, uh, gives us some money from that. And then our, our administrative fees where our general fund charges our, um, our, um, other funds to manage them. I'm not gonna go through every single one of these, we'll put this presentation up on the, uh, website and folks can access this and look at it. And, and if they have questions about what we're doing, uh, we will be happy to, uh, get into great detail. But these are kind of the big picture things, that economic development, uh, thing is what we talked about earlier with Align Multimedia, that's twenty-four thousand dollars for that. You'll see we're replacing computers, we're replacing cars, uh, we're looking at our, uh, facilities needs. Uh, we're also looking at, um, the, 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 uh, the condition of those facilities is part of that as well. Uh, and then at the very bottom there is that revenue sharing agreement that we have with the River Valley Metro District. I think overall we have a, I wanna say it's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That we are obligated to, uh, share with them. Uh, we think just based on conversations with them that we might get to this, uh, in those, in those two, uh, agreements that we have with them in twenty twenty-three. Parks, it's exciting to see parks, we got a lot of money going into parks. Uh, playground, uh, repl- equipment replacement, fall protection. Um, uh, support buildings and, and not buildings, but, uh, uh, shelters and things like that. So keep your eyes open for, for, uh, in our parks this year. Streets, we got a lot going into streets, including two hundred and twenty, two hundred and seventy thousand to finish the, the, uh, to finish the. Contracted portion of the engineer's, uh, work that, that we have contracted to do that, we're gonna be at twenty, at least twenty percent. Uh, of design when, once they finish that, and I think that's coming up pretty quick. Uh, we're doing a big street overlay project in Terra Pond, we're doing a, uh, a really big, uh, rebuild at Eagles Nest Circle. Uh, that little street has major prob- has big problems. Uh, we're gonna pick up the main street, street scape this year in the five hundred block. We pay for a street scape and some work trucks now. One quick item on the work trucks, and I didn't correct this, um, slide, but it's, it's really gonna be, um, we're doing three work trucks. Uh, at your prompting from last meeting, and I think, uh, the general fund and wa- water wastewater fund are sharing, or each paying seventy thousand. And the irrigation is, uh, forty thousand instead of what was up there. We'll make that correction when we put it out.
How much was that third truck? Cause I think some of us had a question about that last meeting.
A third truck, we're, we're calculating each truck would be at, at roughly sixty thousand dollars, including the, the tool or the utility bed.
Okay.
Uh, would be something we'd put on those.
Okay, and then you decided not to get the other plow truck and to replace it with?
Oh, I see what you're, yeah.
Yeah, cause on one, we talked about a plow truck at one time and I thought I remember Director Foner saying, no, we're just gonna not do the plow truck and just do a couple of other work trucks.
Trucks, work trucks instead.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Uh, we're doing a little bit of work at the shop, uh, doing, obviously continuing with youth recreation, uh, programming, special events. Fireworks, that was a, that was a hit. Uh, and then, so to get into the numbers, uh, the, the general fund supports all of these different activities in the town. From, uh, the board's activities all the way down through planning and zoning and everything there on that slide in between. So look at the bottom line, uh, in twenty twenty-three, we're gonna have an estimated beginning fund balance of five million dollars, just a little over five million. Uh, we'll have revenues in twenty twenty-three of four point one six-ish. By the way, if you'd like to fol- kind of follow along, you can go to, I believe it's about page six in your, in that letter. Uh, the, uh, budget message that I included in the.
Yeah, page one fifty-nine of the packet.
Oh, perfect.
Oh, thanks.
There you go. There's a fund summary page and you can kind of follow along on that sheet with these, uh, with these pages. Uh, so our, uh, expenditures right around five point three. Uh, we're hop- hoping for grant revenue of about five hundred thousand. Uh, we're gonna take, uh, uh, about one point, almost one point two million out of fund balance, leaving us with a fund balance of three point eight six two. Or seventy-one percent of our, um, expenditure budget for this year. Any questions at all about the general fund?
What was the outcome of the server cloud question? We had a few.
We're still working on that, right now we have, um. Whatever we had in there off the top of my head, was it twelve thousand-ish or something?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm looking.
And so we're, we're still working with our vendor on getting a hard bid on that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I owe you a follow-up on that, thank you for the reminder. Specific swear words will be forthcoming.
So we'll have, uh, we, we have that still in the budget, but obviously we can spend less if we have something that's, uh, a better option. We have been working with our, uh, with our vendor on, on that though, on, on, uh, sharpening his pencil and sharpening up the, the, the information.
Thank you.
So Water Wastewater Fund, um, this was, uh. This was, uh, came about, this became an enterprise fund back in two thousand and one, we can go to the next slide, I think that's probably, I'm not sure why. I, I guess I put all those in there, they're in the budget message, if you have, if you wanna read those and have questions about them, I'll be happy to, to. If I can't tell you what the answer is, I'll look for them, I'm find, find them for you and let you know. Um, the, the activities involved in this enterprise fund or the production distribution. Uh, and the, and the service at the bulk water stations and then also collection and treatment of, uh, of wastewater. These are some of the big projects, uh, well, no, this is really a list of virtually all the, the capital projects that we're, um. Gonna be pursuing in twenty twenty-three, uh, with the exception of debt service, obviously, that's, that two hundred and fifty-two thousand comes out every year just to pay our debt on that. Uh, the last time that we, uh, did work on the, on the plant. Uh, the biggest one there is the water, uh, line replacement that's, uh, right around at Seventh Street from the south side of, uh, highway, highway, uh, I seventy. It's that boring project that we've talked about, we talked about it again a little bit, uh, today. Uh, the Grand Avenue rebuild is another big one, that one is, um, uh, we, we've, we will have finished the engineering. I think in twenty twenty-three for the entirety.
No.
We're still doing a little, little pieces of it. Why don't you explain that one, since I obviously don't have it exactly right?
Grand Avenue, we're looking at rebuilding it from Pickett where it comes out of Lyons Residential all the way to First Street. Um, with redoing it, we want to redo the water lines that are in it because when you get. To a certain point on Seventh, there's actually three water lines in that road. Um, we're gonna condense it all down to one. Um, and then from about the. Thirteenth, where it'd actually be about where Fifteenth Street would be at, from there to Seventh Street, there's two lines in that road. And one's an old four inch transite line, and we're gonna replace it and do some irrigation work. So we know we can't do it all at once, so we have, we're engineering it, right now they're working from Pickett. In hopes to get engineered to Ninth, and then we'll break that up into increments that will be affordable to do on a yearly basis. And try to use FMLD grants to get that done. Um, also with that, uh, we talked about it one time, we do have a big right away down Grand. And we talked about getting the curb gutter and sidewalk in on the south side of Grand.
Yeah.
So that's adding a little com- complexity to it, cause we've got to figure out the stormwater with the curb and gutter and what we need to do there.
Okay.
And then we got a couple of other, uh, projects up there as well, including that, uh, in the alley behind Tim's Tools, which we've talked about. And then, uh, the air handling, heat and air handling, actually it's just the heat now, right? Didn't we get some of that done?
We, we got the heat and air conditioning done in the lab side, this is just.
This is.
Out in headworks. This is just out in headworks where all the gases and everything are there, handling systems, the major component of that.
And then just a little bit of work on the irrigation system. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Any questions on any of that? So this is the fund summary, $3 million in our fund balance to begin the year with, 4.4 in revenues, 5.1 in expenditures. We're going to dip into fund balance, about $743,000, and we'll hopefully leave about 2.3 million in the fund balance at the end of the year, which is right at 50% of the 2023 expenditures. Next slide, please. I've got four minutes. We won't go into that. If you have questions about that again, I will be happy to send you to Trey's phone, and he can tell you all about the... So we collect water, we store water, and we distribute water for irrigation. That's what this budget pays for. Where we've talked about the turf replacement program in the budget right now. We've got $10,000 to help our citizens who want to replace turf, to replace turf. There is a state program too. We'll be looking more into that to see how they can help us, and maybe we can get the state to pay for some of that. We're going to continue with our education enforcement campaign and public information. We'll continue to audit some lots and upper subdivisions, and we're going to work on the demonstration garden here at Silt Town Hall, which will contain native species plants that folks might want to put in their, in their yards to save water. Next slide is our fund summary. We'll have 416,000 in the fund balance to begin the year with. We'll have $322,000 in revenue. We're going to spend 413,000, dip into the fund balance by about 92,000, and we'll leave 325,000-ish in fund balance at the end of the year, or about, almost 80% of our 2023 expenditures. Okay, there's our, the description of what our Housing Authority Fund does, and some of our spending, which is really minimal this year, mostly just some smaller capital things, and then, of course, the very important senior programs, rides and meals for our folks, our seniors in town. So the, we'll start the year with 214,000. Revenues will be about 290. Expenditures, 307. We'll dip into fund balance by about 17,000. We'll have ending fund balance of $197,000. Fund balance, about 64% of expenditures. Next up is our Victim Assistance Fund, and we, again, we'll talk about that later if you like. This fund provides restitution to crime victims, education to the community, and to, and to anybody who needs it. We provide assistance to returning property victims, providing victims with transportation services to and from, from court if they need it, translation services. And there's also a provision in there that allows the police department to petition that board for police equipment and training. The only big picture items we think we're going to spend some money on next year is about 5,000 for victim reimbursement and 10,000 to River, River Bridge for, for victim assistance. $47,000 at the first of the year. I think we'll have revenue of about 11,000, expenditures 15,3. We'll dip into fund balance by 4,300, and we'll have about $43,000 in there at the end of the year. Beautification Fund is the lodging tax. You'll recall that in 2008, the town imposed a 2%, 2.5% lodging tax, and this year, the town doubled that. So our lodging tax went up considerably, and hopefully we'll get to see a bump in that and increases in some of the things it's, it can be used for, like flowers, streetscape, downtown improvement grant, parks and playgrounds, and virtually anything that, that makes the town more appealing. So this year, we're using this fund on the interchange planning and engineering, Main Street flowers as usual. We're looking at, we've got some park signs that we want to replace, the community park playground, park shelters, trash cans, and horseshoe pits. So we're going to start the year with about 270,000 in that fund. We'll have revenues about 170, expenditures of about 312,000, fund balance, dipping into fund balance of about 142,000, and we'll leave about 128,000 in there at the end of the year. Park Impact Fee Fund, these, these fees are charged to new construction projects, and they're used to, for playgrounds, trails, courts, irrigation, turf, buildings. I think the skate park was a beneficiary of this fund, or some of the money out of this fund. And the summary for this year will be somewhere along the lines of, oh, we're going to, oh, well, back up one, I'll, I'll talk about that briefly. Yeah, 50,000 on, on fall protection at Community Park, and then 110,000 is going to go to the Eagles View Playground and Fall Protection. So we're going to start the year with 150,000 in that fund. We'll have revenues of about 66. We're going to spend 160. We're going to dip into fund balance by about 93,000, and we'll leave 56 in there at the end of next year. Construction Impact Fund, these are fees paid for by, by folks who are applying for annexation, and we can use that fund for all kinds of programs, from staffing, equipment, vehicles, information, technology, anything that, including water, anything that, that, that annexation might impact town services. And this year, we've chosen to put 110,000 into the Eagles View Playground and Fall Protection, and $8,000 into a mower. This is not a huge fund. We don't have a lot of annexations. We've got 121,000 in there right now. Revenues, we're anticipating 35,000, spending 118, dipping into fund balance by that 82,000. We'll leave 38,000 in that fund at the end of the year. So I'm not sure why I left this slide in there, except to say that both Construction Impact Fee, well, I guess that each of these will be, will benefit from decisions that the board made and, and that the voters made on the lodging tax increase in the case of Beautification Fund, but in the case of Construction Impact Fee and Park Impact Fee, we raised those in, in your, in your '23 fee schedule by 15%. Economic Development Revolving Fund, we can go to the next one. And this is our Urban Renewal Authority Fund. This was a loan from basically the Water and Wastewater Enterprise back in the day, before Dollar General was built in order to get their underground infrastructure built. It's a long story, and if you want a lot more detail, Amy and I are happy to provide that. But that loan will be paid for in 2028, and, and we will not see this on the budget anymore until we do another urban renewal type project. So we keep about 13 to 15,000 into that, in that fund all the time, and you'll see that we've done that again in 2023. Conservation Trust is the lottery funds. We get some funds directly from the state on this every year, and they also administer several grant programs. I think the town has been a beneficiary of those funds from time to time. Basically, they're called GOCO funds. Great Outdoors Colorado. We're going to use those funds this year for paving some trails and for Silt River Preserve Master Plan implementation. We've got 130,000 in there right now, and, and at the end of the, or at the end of the year, we'll have that. Looking at revenues, 45,000, expenditures of 30. We'll add to our fund balance by 15,000, get up to 118,000. I think that's it in a nutshell. So that's as small a nutshell as I can get, fast as I can talk. Any questions about anything, or Amy, I see your face on the screen now. Anything you want to add to that?
Just that it includes the, the $90,000 for the crosswalk.
Thank you.
$5,000 for the online recreation registration, of course, $60,000 for that additional work truck for Public Works, and then about $8,000 in the general fund for uniforms, and then 1,500 in the Water Wastewater Plant for uniforms.
Cool.
Or not the plant, but the Water Wastewater Fund.
And you guys got the cost or money budgeted for that online registration system for youth sports?
Yep.
Cool.
Yeah, 5,000.
That's awesome. Just really quick, I know the budget still has $3,000 in there to go towards the chamber.
You read my mind.
I would be more than happy to just cut that out of our budget this year.
Please and thank you.
I don't think that we would notice any difference. Just my opinion, however, so.
Do you want us to actually remove the line item, or just keep that as a buffer in the general fund?
Well, we can keep that as a buffer, I suppose, but I think maybe as a consensus from the board, if there is one that we don't give that money to the chamber, we are not a member of them anymore in 2023.
I agree. We can tell them officially when they come out in January.
That's true, too. Don't even, okay.
It'll be a short conversation.
Yeah, we could probably just tell them via email or something.
Might not make them come out.
I don't know.
Bring rocks, bring rocks.
Yeah, I don't know that I had any other really.
No.
No, looks great.
Looks good.
Looks good, yeah.
Cool.
In fact, if we had to spend that $3,000, I'd move to give like half of that to the Historic Park versus give it to the, to the chamber, I'd much rather see it go there.
And I think we bumped that up, right, to the historical park?
It's 2,000, I think, is what was in the budget this year.
Yeah, is that more than what we usually give them? Or is that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, cool.
I think it could act as an offset on some of those aligned multimedia costs, too. It could be repurposed into that to offset some of that balance, too. That, that was what we had talked about some weeks ago.
Cool.
Yeah.
Did you figure that?
Although I think we have 24,000 in that economic development line, we'll probably, I think that should cover.
Yeah, because they came in tonight with 22.
22 plus 2. There, there's a, there's a $500 a quarter.
Thank you for correcting.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, but that 3 may come in handy to do something, and we'd obviously come to you and talk to you about it.
To its fireworks.
Well, we could go three more minutes.
That's right.
Get some bang for our buck.
Open it up.
I think it looks good, yep. So no further discussion, this is a public hearing, so. Time is now 9:30, and I'll open up the public hearing in regards to Resolution Number 28, Series 2022, Resolution to Adopt the Town of Silt's Budget for Calendar Year 2023, Appropriate Funds and Levy Property Taxes. Any phone, oh, yeah. Persons desiring to make public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, sir.
All right.
I have no raised hands.
Thank you. And there is nobody in the chambers with us, so it's 9:31, and I will close the public hearing, open up further discussion or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 28, Series 2022, Resolution to Adopt the Town of Silt's Budget for Calendar Year 2023, Appropriate Funds and Levy Property Taxes.
Motion by Mayor Protem not to approve Resolution Number 28, Series 2022, seconded by Trustee Seifert. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you to staff for working on that so diligently.
Thank you to the board.
Enjoy those new trucks.
Next up is Resolution Number 29, Series 2022, a resolution to adopt the Silt Housing Authority Budget for Calendar Year 2023 and Appropriate Funds. I will turn it over to Administrator Lehman and Treasurer Tucker.
I would direct you to the, the budget summary that we just presented that showed that the revenue would be about 290,000, expenditures about 307,000, and like the resolution in your packet would reflect. Unless Amy has anything to add to that, I, I would just leave it there.
I do not.
All right. The only thing is, Trustee Hanahan is the Chair of this Housing Authority, so.
Feel free to remove me.
That's a very good point, isn't it?
We have to like adjourn and go to that one and then go back.
No, we don't have to. We decided previous meetings, we don't actually have to adjourn and become that board. We can just pass it down, down, so. So you can open up the public hearing, see if there's any comments.
Is there something specific I'm supposed to say? You're always looking down when you're doing it, so I'm assuming there's some.
It's just to read the
The public.
For persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item.
So I'm supposed to do that, too? It's amateur hour, ladies and gentlemen. Buckle up.
Here for the ride.
Okay, persons desiring to make public comment on items not in the agenda shall activate the raised hand function in the, is that the right one? Yes.
So you just have to change to this agenda item?
Sorry, this agenda item, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For persons who will participate in the meeting by telephone, they should send an email. Don't need to say that.
No.
Only the last part?
Just the first part.
Yeah, well, then I'm done.
Raised hand function, and then ask Sheila if anyone had any phone calls or email in regards to this agenda item?
Sheila, what he said. I'm keeping, it's late.
I don't, there's no one online besides staff, so no one's raising their hands.
And I think you're faking being sick for the record. I'd say, if you didn't want to be here, you knew who was going to run long. I get it, I get it.
Actually, we're like on schedule. You guys have really done well this evening.
There's Jeff to slow things down, yeah.
Typical.
And no, she did not sound well this morning.
Now you can close the public hearing.
It is now 9:34, and I will close the public hearing and open it back up to further discussion or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Chairman, Trustee, or whatever.
Chair, Hanahan.
Exactly. You've never been more right.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 29, Series 2022, a resolution to adopt the Silt Housing Authority Budget for the calendar year of 2023 and Appropriate Funds.
Second.
Losing my voice.
I know. You're right.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 29, Series 2022, as stated, was presented by Trustee Seifert and seconded by Trustee Brentonall. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The vote carries unanimously. The vote carries unanimously.
Good job.
I can relinquish my, I don't know, whatever it is now?
Because I'm back to be in the chair of the next one, so. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Thirty, Series Twenty Twenty-Two, a Resolution, Resolution to Adopt the Silt Urban Renewal Authority Budget for Calendar Year Twenty Twenty-Three and Appropriate Funds. I will turn this back over to Administrator Lehman and Treasurer Tucker.
And again, I would refer you to the slide that where we talked about the Urban Renewal Authority and the fact that we've got about, uh, uh, we're going to have about eighteen thousand dollars in revenue in the authority in twenty twenty-three, expenditures of about sixteen thousand, two thirty-five. Anything to add to that, Amy?
No, sir, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, any discussion by the board? Okay. Uh, the time is nine thirty-six PM, and I'll open up the public hearing in regards to Resolution Number Thirty, Series Twenty Twenty-Two. Uh, persons desiring to make public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, sir.
All right.
I have no raised hands.
Thank you. And we have no one in the chambers with us, so. It is nine thirty-six PM, and I will close the public hearing, open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number Thirty, Series Twenty Twenty-Two, a Resolution to Adopt the Silt Urban Renewal Authority Budget for Calendar Year Twenty Twenty-Three and Appropriate Funds.
Second.
All right. Motion by Trustee Clausen to approve Resolution Number Thirty, Series Twenty Twenty-Two. That was seconded by Mayor Protem Not. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up is the November twenty twenty-two financial report, and I will turn this over to Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we are, uh, in the end of November, ninety-two percent of the year has elapsed. We're doing quite well in our revenues, again, slacking a little bit on the Silt Histor- I mean, on the Silt Housing Authority. Um, they just don't want to give it to us in the month that those, um, revenues come into them. Um, so we're still waiting on, uh, two months, for November and December, so hopefully we'll get back up to that quickly. Um, sales tax, we're doing wonderful on, use tax, of course, we're doing wonderful on, uh, we're ahead a little bit on all of our service fees, like trash, water, wastewater, and irrigation. Um, we're doing well on our expenses. The only one that we are over as far as percentage-wise is Conservation Trust Fund, which is the same as last month, we just spent all of the money, um, at the beginning of the year, so we've been pretty much at our cap for those expenses for the year, but the rest of the funds look well, and we will not have to, um, do any supplementals because you appropriated the appropriate amount of money last year when we were doing our budget process. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions about that.
Good job, Amy, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the hard work.
Okay, Administrator and staff reports. Any administrators or staff like to hit some highlights?
Uh, I would just like to point out that we're closing on the Main Street Lot for Family Dollar on Friday, so, uh, that's been a long time in coming, and I think we can all feel good that, uh, we've got a new business that's going to take that over and build some retail on Main Street.
Awesome.
Yeah. And I don't think I have anything else to highlight today.
Easy enough? Any other staff members? Nope? Okay. Uh, next up is the, uh, updates from the board and board comments, and we'll start with Trustee Hanahan.
Keep it quick, just happy holidays to everybody. This is our last official board meeting of the year, or trustees' meeting of the year, so happy holidays and thanks again to staff for all the hard work on the budget. I know, we feel like we put in a lot of time, but they put in a lot more, so, so thank you all for your hard work. That's it. And I agree with, uh, thanks for all the hard work for the budget and, um, happy holidays, and we'll see you, uh, next time see you, probably go bowling, huh?
That's right.
Um, just like to invite all of the people listening or advise the community to please come out to the, uh, open houses about the wastewater plant, um, that we can get any information and see all the stuff that we've been seeing and understand why we're making the decisions we're making on those things.
Okay, Trustee Clausen?
Thanks to your staff for all their hard work on the budget, and it's, it's winter, it's cold, it's icy, please slow down, be safe, be careful, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Nothing for me. Would also like to thank all the members of staff, uh, for their work on the budget for this year. Um, I feel like the town of Silt's moving in a good direction, and I'm happy to be a part of that. Um, I do believe that the seven of us up here ultimately have the same goal, that we want a great place to live and we want a great place to raise our children. Um, I would like to share some, a, a quick thought of how I think about the growth and how that can help the town as we talk about some of these items, though. We look at having to spend an incredible amount of money on this water plant, and the only way to really make that cheaper and to lessen the burden financially of the people that currently live in the town is more people living here and sharing in that burden and being water users and payers on that. So when we talk about density and zoning and growth, if we stunt that now, I promise that will set our town back further than what we want it to do. So we do that in a planned-out way, we need those users here, they want to come here because Silt's a great place, and, um, that's how I approach a lot of those conversations. So I just wanted to share that viewpoint with you guys. And I also wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. I've got nothing. Uh, we do have an executive session, so. We'll read all that stuff, then we can get the Zoom meeting set up and be good to go. So I make a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section Twenty-Four dash six dash four oh two four F, the Town Administrator's Performance Review.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by the mayor, seconded by Trustee Clausen to enter into executive session. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you think I need to set up a Zoom meeting since all of you are in chambers?
Um, we don't need a Zoom for that, but we'll need the regular meeting still live to adjourn, yes.
Okay.
Is it snowing outside?
I don't know. We were unmuted.
We're unmuted, now we're muted again.
Doesn't look like it's snowing yet.
Oh, yeah, we're back.
All right, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
All right. Uh, the time is now ten oh two PM, and the executive session has concluded. No formal action was taken in the executive session. The participants in the executive session were, no one entered the executive session and no one left the executive session. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Uh, seeing none, the next agenda item is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, motion by Trustee Brittonall to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Trustee Clausen. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously.